And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Good morning. We're here today to present a check to Central Maine CATV from Modern Woodman of America for $2,500. We recently conducted a joint fundraiser through the talent show that was put on by Central Maine CATV, and through generous donors to the station and Modern Woodman's match, we raised over $5,000. Thank you to everyone, and thanks to Modern Woodman for contributing to this activity.
Thank you very much, Patrick. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick.
And the money raised is going to go to purchase some equipment for the station in a variety of ways. So, we certainly appreciate all that Modern Woodman has done for the station.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Follow the meeting, special meeting of the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors to order. Roll call.
Woodman.
Here.
Cabler.
Here.
Justice.
Unable to make it this evening?
It's for zero.
Here.
Mr. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
New business. Will the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors vote to move the vote entitled "Vote to authorize three-year lease of Chromebooks be adopted in form presented to this meeting"? Move. I gotta read the whole thing, don't I?
Seriously.
Let's read it real quick. Vote to authorize three-year lease of Chromebooks. Being hereby voted, the regional school unit number 49, DBA, Main School Administrative District 49, the Lisi, be authorized to lease up to 2,000 Dell Chromebooks with associated operating system licenses for each Chromebook, the equipment from CSI Leasing Incorporated. The lease are pursuant to the lease agreement at a total rental cost of $494,947.02 payable over a term of three years, an annual amount of $164,982.34, plus any applicable interest pursuant to the interest rate contingency as provided herein. The subject to automatic renewal with additional rental payments unless terminated by the district as provided herein. That the superintendent be authorized to execute and deliver the master's lease agreement, equipment schedule, certificate of incumbency, all substantially in form presented to this meeting with such changes as the superintendent may approve in the interest of the district, and to execute and deliver such other documents and instruments as the superintendent means necessary to effectuate the transaction contemplated by the lease, all which hereby authorized and approved in all respects. And, that the copy of this, copy be included in the minutes of this meeting. Okay. Sherry? Move.
Second.
Moved by Sherry, seconded by Neil. Discussion.
Tell us why Chromebooks?
They're a cheaper alternative to laptop. They don't have a lot of features because they're a laptop, so they have everything found in the even school.
And this is our, this is our normal rotation?
Yeah. Actually, there've been several iterations of purchase over the years. And MLTI, the chicken eye laptop initiative, has mutated good time. And this is intent by the district to be able to have predictable cost for this year or the next couple of years. As mentioned in the background notes, the tech folks tell me that they're such marginal value that they've done with the access, more money, and staff, and all the district software often, definitely.
What? Do you know of any of the details about the support portion?
About the support?
The support portion?
With our contract?
Yeah, what does our contract say in regards to student breaks the device?
Let's see, they're substantially the same as we already are experiencing. If there's, if a student is malicious, or anybody is malicious with their device and destroys it, potentially they're responsible for it. The district is responsible if the student does it not, and it's up to us to get the money from the student's family.
And we budgeted for this amount?
Yes.
And they, and they, the maintenance is just routine with it?
Yeah, well, again, after three years, they've had to go through so many generations and the features need to change so fast, the tech folks, it's easier to get better off, just gonna have stuff that's predictable, and they've begun taking work from our tech department. The details on that, but they told me that they're satisfied with the level of support and the type of support, and the immediacy. So, we haven't had issues of, you know, white car, Chromebook, threats, and then looking without something needed for school for two weeks. And we do have backup numbers and insurance, and they're accessing that access.
Did this go to BID, or how did we do this?
The leasing financing went to the, remembering the policy on due to instructional materials, and most of the districts in the area, I think, revert between the business of, since you have the instructional technology to, products that are very common, not just the ones that's using, but the duck.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, they accept it still.
But is that?
The cost of Chromebook, it's a cost of Chromebook, if they'd release.
It can, it can vary.
Well, it came out more, this is the, when they got done with the interest rate and Chromebook purchase rate out, at least optional. But the lease is only three years, so what's the cost to purchase it compared to, the lease is gonna be about $250 per Chromebook, or 2,000.
Right.
So, what's the cost of a Chromebook?
But the cost of Chromebook, straight out for you and I, is right at 225, 250, somewhat, you know, a Dell startup.
Exactly. So, I'm tired for that, why am I gonna lease it for that? Part of the reason the tech department, again, will suggest this is that they don't want them at the end, because when they, when they are at the end of their lifecycle, they require a lot of work, it's called wiping.
Thank you.
The software off, and so it's more economical to buy it, and let the company that owns, technically owns the products, take care of that. So, it's not that it's a huge, you know, savings, it's, it's as cost-effective and labor-effective down the road as well.
And you get maintenance with it.
In three years?
Yeah.
This Chromebook is not going to meet the needs?
Of anybody.
Of the population.
I understand that, I'm just thinking of purchasing 2,000 Chromebooks.
You'd get a better deal.
I'd better get a better deal than what I'm paying for retail for one person.
But can you get the, can you get the maintenance plan with it?
It's gonna come with that anyway, Ronnie, they're gonna come with 2,000.
At least for a year.
Service plan, anyway. I'd just like to see the cost. I know, I understand, there's a bit of wipe it out and clean it out, but all I'm getting is one number, and I'd like to see the other side. What's it cost to purchase them?
Because what, what is the interest rate, 10% you said?
It's kinda like buying a car, three years you give it.
Yeah.
You lose everything you put into it, it's gone.
If you lease it.
I don't know if Chromebook's gonna be worth in three years, might not be worth 50 bucks, but.
Might not be worth anything, but we still might have saved money buying it upfront in the first place. If you can get a, if you can get a maintenance program and all that.
Right. I think without seeing the service contract that they're gonna get with it, that's, that's the secret in the sauce right there.
Yeah, where's Laurie?
Because this is, but, so I think the service contract is the.
We can get her near another one. I do know Winslow went with this, with the same lease program.
Oh, CSI does a whole bunch of education stuff, there's no question.
My question is, 2,000 Chromebooks, I'd better get a good deal. You want to table this till the next meeting?
I need a motion to table. Do you guys want to table? If you, you, I need a motion.
No, I, I'll make a motion, we table it to next time, we get more information.
Second.
Have Laurie here.
Been moved and seconded, let me table. Can I?
Do we have to withdraw the other motion?
I withdraw.
I'll withdraw.
Okay.
You don't.
You don't have to when you table, but that's okay. So, we'll, we'll withdraw the motion and table this issue until the next meeting.
Will that affect the students receiving the books, the Chromebooks before the Star, at the Star School?
They won't have it for the Star School, anyway, but, yeah, it'd be a delay of some things.
That's my only concern.
Well, we should have known it in springtime, then, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I'm just saying, you know, about the kids.
If we're gonna spend a half a million dollars, I'd like to see the other side of it.
Well, I also, to echo the point, we should receive the whole slew of information. They know we're gonna ask questions, this isn't just like a rubber stamp on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the point is, is come with the information, so we don't have to dig around. That's, that's like, prior propping.
All right, well, this motion is tabled. All right, vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, opposed? Nine, two. All right. What action will the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors take on the distribution of supplemental state 2017, 2018 school subsidy? So, before we, do you want to, go ahead Jenny and make the mo?
I can give a bit of a summary, and then I have a motion to make.
Okay.
So, as most people know, the, the state budget was not approved until July, late July 3rd or late July 4th, and in that, there was additional state subsidy for education. It took a couple of weeks for the Department of Education to work through those numbers and all of the changes in the formula, to identify how much was coming back to each school, and we are receiving $771,999.51, more than we had originally included in our budget. Because we were hopeful that there would be additional subsidy in the state budget, we included in our budget a warrant article that said, "The school board will be able to determine if that funding is used to reduce local assessment, increase expenditures, set aside as a reserve." We made that as a blanket warrant, and that was approved as a part of the budget. In addition to waiting the couple of weeks for the Department of Education to work through the process of identifying the amounts by school, we also were waiting for additional information from attorneys to make sure that we were complying with the changes that were included in the biennial budget, as well as information from our auditors to understand how, what we were going to recommend would impact our expenditures and our budget, to make sure that everything we were going to recommend would work with what had been approved. So, the Finance Committee recommends that in order to, recommends a motion, I would make a motion, to implement the Finance Committee's recommendation to distribute $386,000 back to the local municipalities, thereby reducing the need for assessment associated with school funding, and to restore funding for the jobs for main graduates program and the library technician position, both of which were eliminated during the budget process.
A second.
Moved by Jenny, seconded by Ron.
Yep.
Discussion. I think I'll start discussion, because I was on the Finance Committee when this happened, but after talking with the Town of Fairfield and watching what they did last night, I'm actually gonna vote against this. And the reason for that is, this money is supposed to offset, the state legislature did this as a way to help tax relief. That's, that's what everybody, you know, is assumption, and that's why the Finance Committee went along with this, was it was an assumption of tax relief, and that's what the legislature wanted, even though we had the option of not having to do anything. But what happened last night, what I watched on TV last night that the Town of Fairfield did, is the Town of Fairfield chose, they knew that this money's coming back, they chose not to use the contingency fund, which the Town of Fairfield, at the budget meeting, voted to use, up to 250,000 of it, used none of it, because they're getting this money from the schools, so they don't have to use any, so it's not gonna offset taxes for the Town of Fairfield. What it's doing is, they've decided to not do their contingency fund, so they can build up their contingency fund, but not, and it doesn't, so it doesn't help the school district. So, personally, I'm voting against it, that we hold it, use it, either offset it for next year, or, but, they refused to give me their assurance at the meeting two weeks ago, when we, when I went to the meeting and talked to them, or they didn't, they just ignored, didn't make any assurances, and then last night, and I wasn't at the meeting last night, but I did see it on CATV after the fact, and when they made that motion, and that they chose not to use any contingency money, so those of us that are taxpayers in Fairfield, and this is supposed to be a tax relief for all taxpayers, I don't feel that it's an appropriate thing to pass on at this point in time. Fairfield actually sealed it for me. So, anybody else have anything else?
I would like to comment. My interpretation of this, and part of the reason I feel like the Finance Committee made this recommendation, was it was the legislature's intent that at least half of the additional funding be funneled back to offset local assessment.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what the Finance Committee is recommending, and that's all that we can do. We can't control what the individual towns do with their, with their budget. So, my recommendation still will be that we comply with the legislative intent and return the $386,000 to the municipalities.
So, does the, the motion actually stated to offset assessment?
That's, and that's our recommendation.
Our, yeah, that's all we can do.
That's all we can recommend.
We don't control their assessment.
We don't, we don't have a say.
We don't have a say.
Which is why we cannot do it.
Although, Albion, Benton, and Clinton, because I have Fairfield's money, and we're set.
And I, and I hate to affect the other three towns, because of based on what happened with Fairfield, but I'm very adamant on, in this case, with Fairfield, that's why I'm gonna vote against the motion for that reason, so.
Well, I think it makes sense for your town, like, because it's a.
Right, and from my understanding is, I, I talked to, Katrina sent me a message today. She said that Albion has already sent their tax bills, so it's not gonna affect them at all. You said that Benton has all said that they've taken care of theirs, so, to be honest with you, Fairfield held their tax bills intentionally for this reason. That's what it seems like, now that's my.
So, I motion to table it until September.
I disagree. We, we have municipalities that do need to send assessments, and.
But they already have.
No, not all of them have, that's not fair to say. We need to be doing our due diligence, our responsibility is to the district. If you have a problem with the Town of Fairfield's budget, then vote no on their budget. This is the school district's budget.
Right.
We're making a recommendation based on what we felt was going to allow us to comply with the legislative intent, which I, I felt that the Finance Committee thought was important. So, I would not vote to table this motion.
Yeah, especially that we wanna, we do wanna give back those positions, and in this case, I feel like that's the ethical thing to do. I totally understand what you're selling, what you're saying, Shelley, which is that, no, I know, that we can keep the position and not give the money back, but then we'd need to like rewrite it, and.
Well, it just has to change the motion.
I know.
We don't have to, we don't have to do one or the other, or we don't have to do it all in one package.
Yeah.
We can decide to just put those positions back in, because that has not tied to, as far as I'm concerned, that's not tied to, because that 386, that's separate from what we set aside for the JMG and that other position, though that was coming out of the half that we were keeping.
The, the other thing is, is that theoretically, we're not supposed to punish or represent unique towns, right? So, that's the, like, that's the rub for us. No, because I, I wanna say, like, I totally get what you're saying, and I'm kind of, I'm like outraged on your behalf.
Yeah.
But then I'm also like, we are, we are, we're not supposed to kind of be that body, right, that is, that goes back to that, so it, it provides us with certainly a rich discussion.
Isn't that why we added the additional warrant, though? Right. So that we could control the additional funds when they came? And it sounds like we did our due diligence ahead of time, voters already approved the warrant that we kept, we put forward to them.
That's right.
The towns have already passed their budgets, all of them. I do have one rogue town.
The problem is, the, the problem with that is, is that you can do that one time, and then next time, you have an issue of.
That warrants.
Geez, you know, they didn't give us money, because it's not our money.
Exactly.
It belongs to the people that paid it, you know?
Well, it belongs to the school district.
The school district is all the people of all the town.
Right.
So, it belongs to the taxpayers.
It belongs to the school district, no, it belongs to the school district, not the taxpayers.
Well, I have an issue, because it's supposed to lower the local assessment. That's what's in the motion, that's what the money's earmarked to do, that's what it's supposed to do. So, I have an issue with any town that says, these are what these funds are supposed to be for, they're earmarked for, and now you're not gonna take it in good faith when we're giving it back to you, to pass it on to your citizens.
Yeah.
For local tax relief.
Sucks.
So, I got an issue with it myself, I don't think that's right.
Vote them out!
Right, and the last conversations I had with the Town of Clinton, who did call and ask where we were on this, they were waiting for us. Yeah, exactly. Before sending out their, their bills. And I'm sure, and Albion, I can double check, but I'm sure they'll take that money and put it in, either reduce taxes as they come in, or put it, or put it in an account that the next year they will reduce taxes. There's nothing, I'm 99.9% sure, because if you ask me what every select person said there, they're like, "When are you gonna lower our taxes?", and that, that's what they will do, they're not, there's every indication that they will behave in that way. So, I, I'm saddened about Fairfield, because you would think, because you guys have the heaviest tax burden.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, we don't.
And you think that we welcome the lease?
Exactly, you would think.
But.
Petition, petition.
Let's vote.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, our interest is supposed to be in the best interest of the children.
Yeah.
No, you're absolutely right.
So, I'm, I'm gonna say it's best served with, with the school, where it's gonna be best, if it went back to the school, our interest is supposed to be for the children and the school district, and that's where my vote's gonna go.
All right, any more discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? One, two, three, four. Seven, four.
Something in front of that.
Zero. Motion passes. Definitely food for thought for coming here.
Exactly.
As far as that goes. Okay. Moving on. Will the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors vote to accept and approve Tamara Thompson as Finance Director?
Is it Tamara or Tara?
Is it Tamara or Tamara?
Tara.
Tara.
It's Tara.
It's Tara on here, and it's Tamara there.
Right, well, she prefers Tara.
Okay. Tara Thompson as Finance Director.
Need a motion.
So, moved by Jenny, seconded by Kara.
Is it Kara or is it Tara? No, I'm just kidding.
So, did you have a boss in Kara?
Oh, it's been moved by Jenny, seconded by Kara.
Kara.
Discussion.
I, I have some questions. I was on this committee, and I reviewed resumes, and asked when interviews were gonna be, and I never got a call to attend any interviews, so, I was a little dismayed when I saw this.
I thought you had.
So, if there's notes or something, I don't know. Was there any school board member at the interviews?
Yes.
Okay.
How many people interviewed, and details like that, you know?
Four interviews. Four interviews. And.
About a dozen high bookers.
Yeah, and of the four interviews, Jenny and I sat in on three.
Yes.
And not, and, and I'll be honest, Tara's not one we sat in on, but, yeah. Who's our?
There was a representative from the business office as well, as well as the superintendent who were involved.
Abby Violet was, was there to that interview, and in the, the other interviews, based on the conversation we were, and, and the resumes, I think, I think the choice, it was almost a, I think we all kind of was on the same page with the choice.
Which is direct and relatable experience.
Well, I remember that from seeing the resume, but again, I, there's a point to being on a committee, and then.
Dr. Baker, do you have, like, just kind of a quick background on her for?
Yeah, she earned her bachelor's degree from Thomas College, and is working on her MBA. She has worked at Thomas College as an Assistant Director of Student Financial Services, and then was an Assistant Bookkeeper for SAT 54 in Skowhegan, and is currently the Accounting Coordinator for RCU 18, Wiltcliff. And both superintendents and colleagues at the business office all were very positive, and had no reservations about her.
Any questions or discussion?
Most qualified candidate?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, zero, zero. Will the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors vote to go into executive session to interview a candidate for the Assistant Superintendent under 1 MRS A subsection 4056D?
Some over.
Seconded.
By Neil, seconded by Pete.
Summer.
All those in favor? 11.
Can we, can we ask real quick, if there's something that we should ask these ladies?
I asked them when they came in, they just said they would be here just to check things out, at least that's what.
Just to check things out, huh? All right.
Hi. Did you have any questions for us before we go on into executive session?
No, I can't.
Okay. All right.
Thanks for coming.
All right, so we'll go into executive session at 7:25.
How about this lady?
Oh, did you have something, Cindy?
Did you want to see the results, thank you.
You can know where I'm ticked, why I was ticked off, Cindy?
There's a lot more than that, the whole process of setting miller. Yes, I understand your thoughts.
Cindy is the Assistant Town Manager for Fairfield.
Right, yeah. I just thought maybe she had something else to say.
No, just, I wanna send out tax bills.
Yeah.
And I understand that, you know, why you, that.
Why haven't they gone on already?
Because of the.
We already voted on a budget.
We still had to vote on what to do with the fund down. That was one of the council's decisions. And not using undesignated funds towards this, because we were kind of low on it, we'll give it for next year, we'll be, you know.
Well, we have a time we need before to vote on, why did we vote on a budget?
We, we have the budget, but how we fund the budget is what this part's about, whether we fund it all from taxation, taking 150,000 from an designated balance, which does just not creep up, so the more you take from it, which sometimes you keep miller-ing the same by not using anything except undesignated balance, but it's a falsehood to a degree, because that money needs to be, as far as the counties are concerned, to have free balances and reserves, so you have your cash flow.
But did we vote on that already?
No. You voted on your budget, and your budget hasn't changed, but now it passed, because you decreased what you have to, what we have to raise to cover your budget.
We voted to spend contingency funds, and now we're gonna put them back.
The article detailed meeting was allowing, yes, and that's it, because. The article detailed meeting was allowing, yes, and that's it because.
Yeah.
And so you did all your figures, evaluations and that, um, like I said, the budgets are in place. But what has to be raised is very basic, you know, as far as what we have to pay on the school and the principal.
But in, I was at the town meeting and the discussion was using the money. And that was the discussion, I think that's what the taxpayers expected to use, voted on, was to use the money so that it would reduce our taxes. And that's not what's happening. And that's why I am frustrated. That's why I think a lot of people, um, are frustrated and, and, and I'll be doing a lot of talking before the next town meeting.
Don't you like to see taking that out of undesignated fund balance and lowering it, lower than it's going to end up this way by not taking that money, which is, you know, earmarked for.
But the money, they were gonna take it anyway. And they were supposed to take it until the, the, until the legislature, um, said that they would give this, this extra money back to help reduce taxes. And that's not what the town of Fairfield did. The town of Fairfield is using this money to go against, um.
Six to one, half doesn't count.
Right, it's just not.
You know, we, it's, we could've taken two hundred thousand saved from fund balance to offset and it would've been a lower bill rate.
Right.
You're correct.
And that's, that's what was the, the intent of the legislature. That's the intent, that was the intent of the, and if we follow the intent of the legislature, that's what it was supposed to be. But anyway, so let's go into executive session.